This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, March 1st, 2021. In accordance with Governor Pritzker's disaster proclamation, Section 70 of the Illinois Openset Meetings Act, 5 ILCS 110, 120/7 per NE, and determination by the Mayor of the City of Warrenville, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Be reminded, these meetings are all being recorded, as is tonight's. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brummel.
Here.
Alderman Anderson.
Here.
Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman. Alderman Chrisell.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Treasurer Brenner.
Here.
City Attorney Brooke Lenaman.
Here.
City Administrator John Coakley.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White.
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toriano.
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer.
Here.
Public Works Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
Very good, thank you, Emily. At this time, we say the Pledge of Allegiance. We will say it here at City Hall. We invite you to say it at home along with us. (Inaudible) United States of America. One nation, one nation, and one God. Liberty and justice for all. Tonight, as part of our budget program that we do every year, we have two presentations. One from the Police Department for the FY '22 Budget and one from the Finance Department. First, from the Police Department. Chief Ray Toriano is with us tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. And as we do every year, it's an opportunity to explain a little bit of what's going on, what we've accomplished in the last year, and of course, take questions at the... Okay, we usually start off, we do a collage of some of the events over the last year. And if you can see, and I'll just let you read through that. But just a number of the things that we've accomplished, that we did our polar bear plunge that raised just under $1,500. However, we just did it this last Saturday and had a rousing success in that we raised a little bit over $5,000. So, thank you to all the citizens. We're able to obtain a grant through Powering Safe Communities, and it paid for 50% of four of the speed signs that you see up there that are solar powered, that are now up and installed. We have just graduated a couple of recruits on Friday from the suburban law enforcement academy. Officer Emily Bell, who distinguished herself and was voted the class Vice President of her academy class, and Officer Mike Law. They both distinguished themselves academically, did an excellent job in the academy, and they are currently now out in field training. We were doing our community drive-by celebrations because of the inability of people to have celebrations because of COVID. So, to try and make their event a little bit more festive, we would go by with the fire department and in some cases, Public Works, and drive by the home. We raised money for St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital, $1,305 with the No Shave November and Double Down December event that we did, where the officers had sponsors and they didn't shave for two months. I don't know how they did it, but they did. We had two officers win awards for the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists, Officer Jake Seaman and Officer Cassandra McCurris distinguished themselves. And then we had the Toys for Tots, which we were able to have a huge collection of donations. So, as it stands right now, all of our sworn time positions, all of our full-time sworn positions are filled. Our personnel are receiving COVID-19 vaccinations. About 65% of our personnel have been vaccinated. The officer wore in-body cameras are going to be implemented in the spring of 2021. We've assisted other agencies with call-outs in our membership with DuPage Merit. And we had one request here where we had the Merit SWAT team come out for an individual who was intoxicated behind the wheel of a car and unfortunately passed out, but he had a handgun in his hand when we approached the car initially. So, we were able to resolve that peacefully. We're working right now with the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association on HP 3653 for some trailer bill language we hope that will lessen the burden to municipalities as far as unfunded mandates go. We're working with community development to train hotel operators with regard to potential violent incidences that may occur on their properties. And this is in light of what has happened in Roselle in late summer, early fall of 2020, and then just recently in Bloomingdale, where large gatherings are taking place and they've resulted in multiple people being shot and people being fatally wounded. So, we're going to meet with those hotel operators. We've got a meeting set up for later this month, virtually, where we're going to go over some of the things to maybe look for. And they can give us a heads-up or we can short-stop any of those tragedies before they would occur. We've collected nearly 300 pounds of discarded medications for safe disposal. As I indicated, we were in the celebration drive-bys. The I We Live Alone program saw an increase in program participation, and we're grateful for that. We've been able to contact our residents who live by themselves. They're often seniors with the recent cold snap that we had and then just with all of the issues that have gone on with... Our website update with online non-emergency service requests submissions. So, we're doing that right now. In January, we had one officer promoted to the rank of corporal to fill a vacancy there. Our evidence room annual audit was completed. A random sampling of drugs, firearms, and monies that we have in evidence. There were no discrepancies. We have an outside agent that will come in to verify these. So, everything is on point as far as the evidence that we have. I indicated before, in February, with our monies that we have collected for St. Jude's Hospital and also Special Olympics. In March, our new police officer eligibility list was established. That'll be valid through March 31st of 2022. Now, this is just to show you a little bit of how stringent our hiring guidelines are. We had 129 applications. Only 114 were completely filled out and were eligible to take the exam. 100 people took that exam, 88 passed it, and we're on an initial eligibility list. We've taken three, and we probably won't have any other vacancies. So, essentially, three out of 100 were able to get through the screening and be able to be hired as Warrenville police officers. The hiring process was delayed initially of two police officer candidates because of COVID. In May, Officer Christina Snicker was released to solo patrol, and she's doing very, very well out there. National Night Out was postponed because of COVID. It was initially moved from August to October and then canceled. We had a six-month cost-saving study by eliminating the vacant fourth records assistant position. This includes reduced lobby and operating hours. We found that we're going to go forward with that permanently right now. There's been no reduction in the amount of service we've been able to provide to the community and no negative feedback that we've had in the reduction of hours. So, we're saving one full-time position. We began our annual fireworks education and enforcement campaign, and that began in June of 2020. We had traffic control every week for community unit school district 200's mobile food pantry, which was over at Hubble Middle School, where we assisted them with traffic coming in and out of the facility. In July, I met with the Unity Partnership Group Youth Diversity Discussion Panel as a representative of the DuPage County Chiefs of Police Association. These are meetings that are going to go forward, and they've been very fruitful in establishing a dialogue between diverse communities and police so they can get a better, fuller understanding of what we do and why we do it. We were awarded that grant, like I said, for 50% reimbursement of the project costs of those solar-powered speed signs. And in August, I was elected president of the DuPage County Chiefs of Police Association. One recruit was hired to fill an existing vacancy. In September, one recruit was hired to fill an existing vacancy that was Officer Bell and Officer Law. These two recruits began their training in CLEA. Unfortunately, what was supposed to be a 14-week academy has stretched on and on because they had at least two breaks because of COVID, where the academy was suspended. They did some online learning during that time. They also came back to the department for some onsite familiarization with our procedures and also did some ride-alongs to familiarize them with the geography of the community. And again, they just graduated. Our third recruit, Officer Colin Pickens, came to us from River Forest. He'd been a police officer there for approximately two and a half years. And because of his certification, he did not need to attend the academy. So, he is out there right now in field training. We expect that these officers will be released to solo patrol sometime in June. Officer Pickens probably a little bit earlier because of his prior police experience. Our two officers, as I mentioned, received awards from AIM for DUI enforcement. And unfortunately, National Night Out had to be canceled. It's a hallmark event that we really enjoy every year, and we keep our fingers crossed that we can get it up and running again this August. One part-time police officer retired. That position is now vacant. We had 15 officers participate in our sergeant's promotional exam, which I think is an excellent representation of the officers here that are looking for career advancement and want to go on and be career members of the police department here in Warrenville. We installed those solar-powered speed signs and got those up and running. Excellent. Pardon me for the technical issue. And let's see if I have anything else here. Okay, November, our sergeant's assessment for the promotional list was conducted, and it resulted in an eligibility list that's valid until 2023. We worked with Assistant Administrator White and DuPage County Communications for a new police recruitment video, and that's currently in the editing phase. I did see an initial preview of it. It looks to be very, very good. I think it'll complement the department well. We did already talk about the No Shave November and our Toys for Tots campaign. We did fill the Part-Time Emergency Management Agency Coordinator position. That person is up and running. They were a retired deputy chief from the Bensonville Fire Department who has extensive experience in this. They are currently, he is currently working on updating our SLEP and also our EMA, or yes, our EMA guide. And he's working, and he had some training, and he's working hand-in-hand with DuPage OEM, Office of Emergency Management. So, this is going to be something where we're hoping in about six months, we're going to be fully up and up-to-date and operational. His next, what do I want to say? Goal, so to speak, is going to be looking at some of the training that we're going to be doing with our EMA personnel right now. As I indicated, that our CLEA graduation was delayed, and the Records Division completed 2013 to 2018 state-mandated cannabis arrest expungements. 390 cases were identified, 200 cases qualified for expungement, and those have been done to meet the state mandate. And if there are any questions that you have, I would be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you very much, Chief. A very busy year, and I continue to be positively impressed with the quality of recruits that we attract in Warrenville. That certainly reflects the quality of our department. So, thank you for keeping that quality very, very high. We'll go on to the Alderman and see if there are any questions or comments for you, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
I just want to thank you, Chief Toriano and your team for your great work. No questions this evening.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer.
I'd just like to say thanks. You guys had a busy year. Make sure and thank all the officers for the good work they do for our community.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry.
Yes, thank you for the great report, and thank you for, as Alderman Ashauer said, everything that you do for our community and everything that all your partners do there. Warrenville is a safe place, and it's all because of you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Yes, I also am always very proud of our police department, what they do. Not only their jobs there, you know, mandated police offered jobs, but they have a lot of fun, and they raise a lot of money. And I just think it's a wonderful, it's wonderful for the community to see that, too. I had one question on the EMA position. We had talked a while back about, there was a decision package about converting part of City Hall, I think, for an office for EMA. Is, are we okay with that? I mean, is there room? He's obviously operating out of somewhere. So, are we okay for that temporarily?
He is working right now. Part of it is remote and part of it is down at the office that is currently set up there for EMA. But he is meeting at least three days a week, either in person with the Deputy Chief of Administration and Support Services. And this is where he's getting a lot of his goals, reporting back. And the idea of converting something, I believe that was something that would have been addressed by Administrator Coakley when we looked at the facility study, if they were going to make the investment to try and move it there.
Okay, but everything is fine for now, right?
Yes, Alderman.
That's what I'm gathering. My last question, well, it's not a question. It's just saying, I'm the Lianas on to the Environmental Advisory Commission, and this is the second meeting where I've had something to take about the solar-powered sign. So, thank you very much. You're making my job easier and easier and making the city look really great to all those environmentalists. So, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for that presentation. My first question, you said that the website was updated with online non-emergency service requests submissions. Is that on public signs or are people using them?
Yeah, we did put that out. I believe that we did put it on our Facebook page, that we updated that. We can always put out another reminder. I don't know if things kind of get lost in all of the COVID information that we were putting out, but I'll check on that and make sure that we get that highlighted again.
I don't think I was aware of it. I took a quick look at the city webpage and wasn't able to find it immediately. So, yeah, a little bit more prom replacement of that if this is another thing that we want to let people know about.
Okay. I'm sorry if I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. You're coming through kind of scratchy.
Yeah, the rest of us are having problems also, Alderman.
All right, thank you.
That's better.
Better, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any decision packages for the upcoming budget from the police department this year?
No, Alderman, there are not.
Okay, in terms of other budget considerations, how is overtime at present? I know that staff is working without a union contract, so how has that affected them?
Well, you know, we have done pretty good with that. Now, you may see a little bit, and we've talked about this in prior years, you may have seen a little bit of an uptick in the overtime, but what you will see is in the regular salaries that have been paid out because we had those open positions, that that may be reduced. So, the money that you spent in overtime is being saved because you weren't paying the regular salary. But again, I think those things that, we try to do everything in our power to minimize the overtime. We have the Fourth of July fireworks enforcement special details, which costs about $15,000 for us to go through that period of time where we've got those extra officers out there. And again, we take everything, and this is the way it's reported by Finance. When you look at certain things, you're never going to get away from. The monies that are spent for holidays, when you have officers out there on Fourth of July, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, what have you, that's counted as overtime. Court time is counted as overtime. So, some of those things, you'll never see the police department with a zero-sum overtime budget.
Sure, sure. So, has working without a union contract affected morale or...
Not at all.
Any other consequences?
Not at all. When I met with them, I had, these officers have got to be some of the easiest officers that I've ever worked with in my 45-year career in law enforcement. They are really dedicated to the mission of providing service and protection to the community and doing what's right for the profession and the community. And when I had a labor management meeting, labor management meeting with the membership, when I brought up the issue of body cameras and how they felt about it and if this was something that they were going to want to negotiate over, their only question to me was, how come it's taken this long to get them? So, they were all 100% in favor of them and absolutely no issues.
That's great, okay. And my last question is that, you know, this presentation was a great summary of the past year, but what are your goals for the year ahead?
Well, you know, a couple of the things that we want to do is make sure that we get those officers, now those three officers, fully functional. And what I mean by that is they get through their field training and they're out there, and they're going to become productive additional members that are going to be on solo patrol. With regard to that, we will re-establish the POP unit, which will be out there, and those are our plainclothes officers that work on some of the problematic areas that are better addressed by officers in an unmarked car and not in a police uniform. And the last thing, because our caseload has increased, we are looking to add a fourth detective to the Investigations Division. So, those are our major goals for this year right now. We have tried to do everything we can to hold costs down and not look at any major investments, which we're good right now. We really don't need anything.
Okay, so there's no decision package for the fourth detective? Detective that's not in the budget for this year? Or it would just be something you're developing?
Well, no, it's not adding another person. It's just moving a person from one assignment to another.
Ah, okay. Thank you for that clarification. I see. All right, thanks very much, and good luck with this new budget year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing that hasn't already been said. I'd just like to call out that, you know, my appreciation for, you know, public service is a little bit tricky when you have to socially distance and wear your mask and do all those things. And you see these men and women out there doing it anyway. So, and with no reduction in service. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Thank you. And thank you, Chief, to you and all your personnel for the service and professional service and the protection that you provided. I can't think of a tougher job to have in this environment. And somehow, with the different things that you bring forward in your department, you make it look easy. I'm excited about that we're moving ahead with the body cameras. I think that would create a big change in my behavior if I was a police officer. But it's the day and age of what we're dealing with. And we, you know, it's just such a tough and difficult job. And I think that they've done a great job of not only carrying out the law enforcement end of things, but again, embedded, becoming a part of the community by their actions and their activities so that they can move about in the neighborhoods and communicate with people and find out what's going on and what the temperaments are. So, I really do appreciate all their hard work and their dedication and I guess the spirit of core that they have, too. That's very evident. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson.
Well, one's had already been answered. I did have a question about the cameras and what was the attitude of all the officers, the acceptance of the body cameras? And I think that's...
Yeah, they're looking forward to them.
Okay, good. That's a positive response there. The other question I had was, how many of our officers are bilingual?
Well, let me see. One, two. I think we have right now five or six.
Okay, that's pretty good of the percentage that we have. But it's nice to know that we do have a lot of bilingual in there in the community. I'm sure that helps all of us. Thanks an awful lot, Chief. It's a great presentation. Congratulations on everything that you've done, and thank you, on behalf of all of our citizens.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Okay, we'll move on then to the budget presentation for the Finance Department. Our Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand is with us. Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you very much. I need to be made a presenter by whoever has the controls. Hold on just a second, not seeing it yet. There we go. Okay, you should be able to see my screen at this point. Give me just a moment here to get everybody back where I need to have you. So, I thought I'd start out by just sharing with you that this has been, and this is going to be without, I probably should go without saying, it's been a very difficult year for everyone, but we've got a very hard time in the Finance Department. Hold on, I just don't think this, is this displaying correctly?
It's working.
Okay. The challenges we've had for this year are first to our COVID-related. The monthly reporting on a cash basis, which shouldn't seem to be all that hard. The cash basis is not a way we think of most things in finance. Everything we do is accrual. So, for 30 years or so, I've been thinking everything in accrual. So, it was a little hard to get changed to a cash-based way of thinking, but we were able to do that. I'll address that again here in a few moments. The other issue we had with COVID specifically is remote work. The vast majority of what our department does is face-to-face contact with our residents, where the first people, most people in... is face-to-face contact with our residents, where the first, first people, most people encounter when they come into the city hall. And having half of our staff out working remotely as we, as we did, did our best to make, to make everyone stay safe, it was a little hard to, to make sure we were able to help everyone. Now, it, it, it was a little easier with the reduced hours, but, but we were able to, uh, provide all the services we normally did before, and I think we did extremely well with that. Uh, ERP has been an ongoing cha- 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 challenge now for about three years. Uh, one of our biggest cha- 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 challenges is the use of dual systems, uh, particularly in the area of accounts payable. Uh, we've actually been entering accounts payable in two systems, both the old and the new since November of twenty nineteen, as we worked through getting that all up and running. We had a particular cha- 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 challenge with payroll, and that's been ongoing. Going, as you recall, um, Microsoft pulled the rug out from underneath our project. I said that they, by saying that they would stop supporting payroll. So we had to go in a whole new direction, which led ADP, and there's a whole, the whole discussion. ADP would not have been part of what we were going to do at all, uh, but we worked toward the resolution of that. So it was a challenge to get them on board. Uh, utility billing is being built for us from scratch. Um, it is a, it is not a system that Microsoft Dynamics has already. That's being built by Ma- Maizik as they build that out. Uh, there's been cha- cha- challenges there. Uh, we're still headed towards some big cha- cha- challenges as far as getting all the data and the history involved for all of our residents. Uh, but we're headed that way and we will, we'll, we'll get there in the few, um, months out of us. Cashiering, we've been working on remodeling how our cashiering works, which will allow for more challenge, more, um, ways for residents to pay for things. We had some significant cha- 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 challenges and it's a lot harder to test remotely, uh, when we're trying, trying to get new credit card terminals up and in place and programmed correctly. Uh, we're about at the point where that will be resolved. Now, I'll explain that more in a little bit here. The other big, big issue we had over the last five months or so has been the use of the budgeting module. Um, it should have been, been in place a year ago when it came, came time to start the, the, this year's budgeting. It was still not done and ready to go. It took a, a lot of work and a lot of staff, staff effort. Um, and I will explain a little bit more about that in a moment. So some of our successes during twenty twenty-one, we brought, brought in a new account payable clerk, Megan Carter. She started on March twenty-fourth of last year. As you recall, that's kind of right as Co- Co- COVID was going into full gear here and sort of we locked everything down and, and that's when she started. She's done exceptionally well with very li- 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 little time for cross-training, uh, with the outgoing clerk clerk who retired after twenty-two years. Uh, but she has picked up right where Kathy left off. When she retired, retired, has done an exceptional job and she's been the one doing all that entering into two systems for accounts payable all this time. She's worked extremely well and has fit in extremely well. Uh, one of our other big successes of the year was the twenty twenty audit process. The, the, that's normally done with auditors onsite and here for a whole week, going through everything we do, uh, kind of underfoot that whole two, or that whole week, asking for this and asking for that. We did that whole thing remotely this year. My staff and I got everything done and two, two of them on time. We, we were able to complete that whole process remotely, with the exception of about a half a day where they had to be out here because there were some things they just could not do remotely. We, we also achieved our twenty-seventh certificate of excellence in financial reporting for our twenty nineteen audit. We should also be hearing any day now of that our twenty twenty audit also qualified for that award and that is the highest award in government financial accounting that we can receive. Um, I also like to think that we were, uh, did a pretty good job, uh, pretty good job of our monthly reporting on a cash basis. Um, and that sounds like it ought to be real easy and it isn't all that easy because we have to watch, um, in order to get that report out on time, it meant that we had to watch bank, 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 bank accounts and state websites to know exactly when that money was sent to us so that we can have it in time to include in those reports. Now, we wouldn't normally watch those accounts and sites every day, but we had to do, do that to make sure that we were able to provide you with that kind of reporting. And I think we've done a pretty good, a good job of getting that to you in a timely manner so we can keep track of exactly what was happening to us as a result of COVID. Leo Beltran, our senior accountant, um, he's now become the liaison to TAC. He took over as Christina moved, moved, moved down to go to IDAC, um, and be that liaison. Uh, Leo, Leo's worked extremely hard to get this going. And for him to understand, it's, it's going to be a good thing for him to get a little more feel for how some of the committees work and, and, uh, for him to have his hands in more than just the accounting and to actually, um, interact with a few more of the people around the community, the, the, the community other than just the numbers. Some, some of our successes as well, like I said earlier, was the accounts payable since, since December of twenty nineteen. Um, everything we do, um, the majority of our reporting is being done now in D three sixty-five. And, uh, you've actually had a report, uh, that we've been, you're using now for a while. Um, item six D on tonight's agenda has, has actually been output from that new system. And, uh, and that's worked well. We worked them to design the report, so it's very similar to what we used in our outgoing model. Uh, payroll, we went live just in February. It took a lot of time and a lot of effort from a lot of people to get us to, to the point where we were actually live. Uh, it went extremely well. There were very few issues. Uh, there was actually only one employee who did not get paid on time and that was because of an incorrect bank account entered along the way, uh, which I thought was extremely, um, extremely good considering we paid about a hundred people and only one did not get paid. There were obviously other mistakes that you can expect to be made, but none of them meant anybody did not get paid. Uh, the one individual that did not get paid, paid, paid on time, we were able to resolve very quickly and we made sure that they got, got, got paid for that payroll. And then going forward, that, that should not happen again. The cashiering, uh, I mentioned earlier, we had some issues. Um, as we worked through the train, train, training on that and to get everything configured to do that, we, we, we were told by our credit card provider that the terminals that we were using were only test terminals and were not live terminals, which it took everybody months and months to tell us. So we, we were able to work them with them to get that turned around and provide us with, uh, new terminals that, that will be both used at City Hall and at the police depart- department. Those, those are now configured and will be ready to go very soon. Uh, budgeting, we did have staff enter a lot of their budgetary data, data for the twenty twenty-two budget into that system. Um, it's not quite in a position where I can, I can turn, turn, turn around and print that, you know, information out in a completely usable form at this point, but we have made a lot of success with that. And a lot of the work done by all of the staff, um, it actually spread the, the work out from finance into the other departments who were able to help with that as well. And the work they did, they did for this year will help with having us well-prepared to have the budget in place next year and to be used that from the very beginning. Uh, we normally start our budget entry in October, uh, because it was not ready to go. Staff, uh, was not able to do their entries until mid-December, which everybody hopped on, got on and got all that done in a very short amount of time. And, uh, we would not be as far as we are, um, right now without all that hard work from them. Uh, some cha- cha- cha-challenges that we will have for the upcoming year. Uh, we will get all the staff trained on our new purchasing modules, uh, that will allow everybody from all the departments to be entering their own purchasing and we'll get a tighter, a tighter, a tighter rein on how we, uh, do all of our purchasing and buying now. We've been on a sort of an honor system for quite a while. This will tighten that up and make sure that everything flows through, uh, all the departments and will flow right into our GL. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the budget module is in use. It's not in full, full, full use yet, but as I mentioned, our goal will be to have that in full use by the time we start our twenty twenty-three budget. Uh, then we will also be working extremely hard over the next couple of months or so to get our general ledger live. Um, it has been used part of a dual system for part of the year and we ran into issues with the interfund accounting and how that, how that was set up. We finally got that resolved, uh, with Ma- Ma- Maizik doing a bunch of reprogramming to make sure that works. So what we, our goal is to reset that GL for the beginning of the new year so that we're able to use that completely and then can abandon our outgoing software and not have to do, do, do entry there as well. Uh, big cha- 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 challenge is going to be getting the utility billing live. The current, uh, or the D three sixty-five software, as I mentioned earlier, does not have utility billing. That's being built for us from scratch. It's going to take still a lot of work to get, to get, get that done and in place, but, but we also then, and when it's done, it's going to improve our ability to help and serve our residents and allow them some more interactivity so that they can actually see bills themselves, know how much they have to pay without having to call us. Uh, the cashiering will be live, 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 live as well, as I mentioned, and there will be additional opportunities for our residents to pay for things online that they don't have the ability to pay for now. Uh, as I near the end here, there are two more big things that will remain in, in front of us is the ongoing revenue cha- cha- challenges that we will have as a community, a result of COVID. Uh, as things loosen up, that, that does not mean that the money immediately starts flowing. Uh, there's still going to be some cha- cha-challenges we work through through twenty twenty-two, probably into twenty twenty-three as well. So there's going to work out to make sure we're staying on top of all of that as well. And I look to increase the, the, the reporting I'm able to do to you. Uh, not, not, not so much on the COVID losses, but on the budgetary look at how the things go as we're able to produce reports a little easier out of our new s- system. And then finally for this year, we, we, we discussed that we have to do some short-term bar, 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 borrowing to meet some of our financial cha- cha-challenges, particularly in the water area. Um, and, uh, we want to make sure we get, we get, get, get the right borrowing determination made. And since we are not a community that's borrowed much in the recent past, it's going to be a bit of a cha- 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 challenge for us, but one that I'm sure we can meet. And with that, I will gladly answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, we certainly want to recognize, uh, what a challenging year it has been for you and your department and, uh, the remarkable job you've made, uh, keeping, keeping us, uh, our head above water, um, and keeping everything in order. And certainly you have an enviable series of certificates of excellence in financial reporting, which tells us that, um, everything is always done exactly the way it's supposed to be done in your department and that's greatly appreciated. Um, we'll go to the Alderman for questions or comments, beginning with, uh, Alderman Anderson.
I echo the mayor's comments. My, my thanks to the finance director and all the work of the, of the finance team. Um, it's been great to see the, the continued changes in reporting to try to keep us up to speed as to what's all going on. So thank you. I think my hope, um, with the ERP platform, there's been so much time spent getting it installed and live that hopefully we can spend this next year optimizing it and you're able to tell stories of here's things we've now able to do that we couldn't do before, um, and the, the real benefits of the platform. So hopefully we'll have some of those stories in the coming year. Uh, no question.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashower.
The, I'm glad to see that the ERP is finally being utilized to the level it is. It's been a long haul with that. Um, thanks for everything your department does for us. The, uh, you're kind of the heart of what makes everything work. And the organization that your, your department is the face of the city for most of the people that have contact with us either by paying bills, paying for permits, doing, getting garbage stickers and things. Um, just want to appreciate the, the good face that they give the city that, through that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry.
Yes, I'd like to thank the, uh, uh, finance director and, um, everyone in the finance department for doing such a great job this year. I know it's been very difficult with COVID, plus the, the, the ERP has taken a toll on everyone over the last few years, um, and, uh, they've really hung it in there and has done a great job. Um, I want to, uh, uh, say thank you to, uh, Leo Beltran. Uh, he has come over to TAC and he's done a great job. Of course, we miss Christine, but, um, Leo has just, uh, been amazing. Uh, he's, uh, been able to work with a bunch of women. Uh, sometimes that's not always the easiest thing to do and, um, but, uh, he's answered every question and has just hung in there and, and like I said, done a great job. So I want to personally thank Leo for, uh, everything he's done for TAC. So thanks again, uh, Kevin, for a great report.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman D'Alvalo.
Yes, I, I'm not going to repeat the glowing accolades that everybody else has said, but I, I agree with them. I didn't know what was going to happen in COVID. I mean, just the whole staff and especially the money situation and was I going to understand it? And was I going to be able to contribute or anything? It just was so bizarre. And I will tell you that it has gone way better than I thought. And I think I'm understanding it, Kevin. I think you're doing a good job of putting this out so I can make decisions when those, that kind of information is necessary. So, uh, thank you very much for all you're doing. This has been sacrificial work by all the staff, but especially your group in finance. So, um, on we go to the next year. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. Yes. Uh, Kevin, I, I just received my budget. I think the police officer dropped that off at four fifteen today and, uh, it is so much work. Thank you for all of that. I'm looking forward to reading it. I know that the whole staff spent so much time preparing this and we're, we're going to have changes and we're going to have a lot more time to talk about this in, in greater detail. But I'm so impressed about the switch that you had to make this year from, from accrual to cash accounting. You know, as, as a professional person, I can't imagine how confusing that must be and how, how long it must take to get your mind around, um, changing from one system to another. You know, as a lawyer, I, I can't quite imagine maybe a similar parallel or maybe not. It would be if you had to change from the common law system to the civil law system. You know, like, um, an American lawyer having to practice in Germany or some things like that that uses an entirely different legal system from one that we use. But that just seems like a very daunting thing and I'm, I'm very impressed at how successfully you've navigated this in the middle of an also daunting year in terms of the pandemic and in the middle of the ERP rollout. So thank you for being as successful as you have been with all of that. So thank you for being as successful as you have been with all of that. Lastly, I would say on the continued revenue challenges and also our borrowing situation. I hope everyone here has received the update. The staffer from Congresswoman Underwood's office sent around with some proposed rescue bill revenue allocation information. I know it's not final yet and it's too early to start counting the dollars, but it was a very hopeful thing to see the potential of some federal assistance that could really, really be useful right now. And I'm keeping my fingers crossed for passage in something like the form that Representative Underwood staffer let us know about. I hope you've seen that, Kevin.
I have. Thank you.
So I guess I'm just trying to end on an optimistic note that this new budget year to come will be a big improvement, that things will operate more smoothly in your department and we won't have this kind of crisis for too much longer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kuschel.
Yeah, I too have a list here of kudos that I wasn't, I'm not going to repeat them all, but I would like to say that I, like Alderman Anderson, am metrics-driven and I'm excited and looking forward to seeing what kind of details and insights we can pull out of this ERP system. I think there'll be a lot of great things that it's going to tell us. So I'm excited and looking forward to more of that. But great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Kevin, and your department for handling all the different changes that were thrown at you this year in a most professional way and for coming up with all the different reports on the fly that we had requested and so forth. You have run a very efficient operation. And along with what everyone else has said, I second all of their opinions. And thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson.
I wondered if you, fifteen years ago when you came here, Kevin, did you anticipate this kind of a year to have to work with? I bet you didn't. It was pretty good. When you get the ERP and, you know, you got that system several years ago, but it was really complicated to try to put into that system all of the various active actions that we needed to have. So it was really tough. And then you get COVID nineteen to throw that in. It's got to be a very, very difficult year. I know that we have income problems, we have expense problems, and you're trying to handle all of these things. So you are the best juggler that I've seen for a long time to get all this stuff to come down and not drop the ball. So congratulations, Kevin, and your group. It's been fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Kevin, I hope you hear that you're very much appreciated. Please pass that along to your staff. Good luck in the coming year. Good luck with the ERP getting ironed out and actually providing us with some benefit. I am excited at the prospect of what has been hanging over us for so long, of how this was going to improve our operation. We were going to get rid of legacy systems that were failing and no longer supported. Couldn't speak to each other. I mean, I really look forward to the point where we accomplish all the things that this system was supposed to provide for us. And appreciate the fact that you've really had to struggle to get us there. It hasn't been your fault. It has been difficult for a number of reasons that were beyond your control, but you're wonderful. So thank you again and onward and upward. And just take the rest of the night off, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll pass that all along to my staff because there's no way we could do it without the team effort that we have in place. We all work extremely well and we work for each other and with each other. So I think that's really the only way we're able to produce things the way we do. So I will make sure I pass along all the kind words. Thank you all very much for that support.
Excellent, Kevin. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the part of our agenda that we save for citizens' comments. There are three possible ways to do comments at our meetings. You could show up in person, you could send us an email, or you could be on the line when we're having our meeting. We'll begin with people who have shown up in person this evening. We have one person, Mr. Bob Seibert is here. Bob, would you like to come to the podium?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. The greatest problem that we have today is getting a COVID vaccine. They have one way of which this can occur. We can't influence the supply. It's an inelastic supply, but we can look at demand. We have to find an area where demand is lower. I did this in the sixth area around our situation. I picked Lincoln Park in Cook County because the socioeconomic group there...
Just a moment. It seems like there's some background noise that's interfering with listening to what Mr. Seibert has to say. Would you please make sure you're muted if you're not speaking? Thank you. Go ahead, Bob. I'm sorry.
Okay, the Lincoln Park area, because of the social economics of high-income, younger people and the fact that they believe that they would not get it, gives an opportunity to the individuals who want the COVID vaccine. I went on the computer and looked in that area for a pop-up vaccine group and it wound up with Innovative Express Care, which was at a Mini Cooper car dealership. And I called on Wednesday, last Wednesday, at five o'clock, received two appointments for Thursday at ten AM in the morning. So I got it with a very quick appointment. The demand was very low there. So this is how you can get a vaccine shot. In our county, there's not only a shortage of supply, there is also a large demand. So you have to go to another area and then you can receive it. The second item, fifteen years ago, the city of Warrenville sent this document out to every household in Warrenville. It was a document on the home rule sales tax. Three places on the document. It states on the front, "To use excess sales tax revenue to reduce city property taxes." On the backside, it says, "The citizens ask for reduction of property tax." And in the description, it states that excess sales tax revenue will be used to reduce property taxes. For those of you that were not here fifteen years ago, this occurred because there was a $660,000 proposed over the previous three years, years to come, from six twenty-six to 2009, when the TIF would be ending. To get through this period, to have the sales tax, the home rule, three-quarters of 1%. Now, after fifteen years, we certainly have paid the $660,000 back. We've come under over that problem. I believe it was a few weeks ago, the finance department stated that the only revenue account that is exceeding its budgeted amount is the home rule sales tax. In the condition that we have with the pandemic, with the number of unemployed individuals that are having a hard time, we should not be raising property taxes. You folks have raised the property taxes this year, proposed to raise the property taxes by $250,000. At the same time, the federal government is sending over $5,000 to every couple in the United States because of the problem. It is very foolish and economically unsound to raise taxes when we're in this situation. And it isn't the fact that this revenue isn't there. I believe it was stated that this will generate somewhere near a million dollars. So there are funds available. I suggest that we should change the increase in the property taxes and go towards not raising these and utilizing the revenue from this account. And it would go along with what was stated to the residents fifteen years ago. Not once, but three times, sent to everybody. And this has been brought up to this group in the past and no one has spoken to this issue. So it appears that the property taxpayers and residents are left alone. Really, it is your job to protect them.
Thank you, Bob. We will go to email comments for this evening. I have one that I'd like to read at the beginning here. It's addressed to the council and all city employees. "I hope we are all feeling a little bit of optimism that 2021 is the beginning of the end of the pandemic, after all of the challenge and even the misery we have endured in 2020. It occurred to me late to be sure to send a thank you to you on the city council, administrators, staff, public safety, and all other city employees for the courage, talent, adaptation, and fortitude you have all displayed in your steadfast work over a long and trying period. We are all understandably looking forward to a time for simple enjoyment of family and friends, recovery of businesses and the economy, children returning to school and beloved activities, and less of a daily struggle to keep our homes functioning. I know I am expressing what many other residents believe, that you are all much appreciated for your constancy and hard work. Stay safe. Signed, Laura Hall." Thank you, Laura. Do we have any other email comments for this evening? None? Okay. Do we have anyone on the line at the meeting that would like to speak at this point? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on then. This would be the last opportunity for public comment at this meeting. We will go on now to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Just a reminder for me about the COVID nineteen vaccination opportunity. The DuPage County Health Department is currently registering and vaccinating frontline essential workers and those over sixty-five living and working in DuPage County for COVID nineteen. To register for weekly updates and appointment scheduling, visit the health department's website at dupagehealth.org/covid19vaccine. You can also contact your pharmacy or your primary care provider, local pharmacy, or look up a vaccine provider at coronavirus.illinois.gov and select vaccine locations. Everyone is encouraged to get vaccinated as soon as it is your turn. Until we are all vaccinated, remember to continue to observe the three Ws: washing your hands, wearing facial coverings, and watching your distance. And the best advice I think that I've gotten is, as many lists as you can get on, get on them because there are opportunities out there and sometimes serendipitous opportunities when maybe there's extra vaccine at a location because people didn't show up. And you might, if you're in the right place at the right time, be able to get vaccinated. So it's going to take some effort and we're getting there. But it seems that the opportunities are accelerating to get vaccinated, but it's incumbent on you to make that effort. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm going to count my blessings because about three weeks ago, I went on DuPage County Health Department website and registered to get the vaccine. And I got a call the next day telling me a date to go to Central DuPage Hospital. And I went and got my first shot and I get my second one on March the eighth. And they are the most efficient-run organization I have ever been to. I was in and out in twenty, maybe twenty-five minutes, and that included the fifteen-minute observation period that you have to do. It was very, very well done. So I keep on reading about everybody's problems getting, some people are driving to Peoria to get the shots. And I'm very thankful I somehow got in. Now, maybe just because of my age, I'm not sure, but I'm very thankful. So for those of you who are still looking, I wish you well. Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer, Larry.
I had the same situation. I got an email from Northwestern Medicine and they said, "I hit a link, got my shots, and that's it." It was twenty minutes in and out of Central DuPage.
Very good. Glad to hear that. Let's go through the alderman, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
Just encouraged by signs of spring, I can see some grass in my lawn. And so I'm optimistic that we have a new season ahead of us. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashower. You are muted, Alderman. There we go.
I apologize. No comment tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Berry.
I have no comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Davalos.
Yes, I'm just happy to see spring also. And on we go. And yeah, that's all I have. I'm just happy.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Yeah, I want to wish everyone a very happy Casimir Pulaski Day, which is today. And also I want to express my thanks to all the staff and the residents who have reached out to me about my family's loss. It is not just inconvenient, it's not just a budget issue. It's really tragic. It's affecting a lot of families. And I just want to say thank you to everybody who reached out to me and made my days a little brighter. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kuschel.
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Alderman Widener.
Thank you. I have nothing to add.
Very good. Alderman Wilson.
Well, the only thing I can say too is I just got my second shot this past Friday and my wife gets it Wednesday of this week. And we just stood in line and Central DuPage Hospital did a fantastic job. If you were fortunate enough to get through them. Well organized, set up perfectly, and took no time at all. So thank them for all of the, they did. And I'm glad I got my shot and good luck. And I hope everybody gets theirs too.
Thank you, Alderman. City Administrator, John.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of quick things. As already mentioned tonight, but the fiscal year twenty-two budget is available. It's been distributed to all the aldermen, just got distributed like this afternoon. The staff has it. It was, as was noted by Kevin and some of the aldermen, a tremendous amount of effort this year to get that done by the finance and the whole staff. Not a typical year, which is just, everyone realizes that. And everything, everybody's doing, not just here at the city, is just more complicated. So great job getting that done. I'm sure there's things that we need to review and look at and update, but please take some time to start going through it. There will be, there's a, I sent a memo out with your information on Friday. There are opportunities, if Alderman individually, or we could meet in too, if someone's willing, that Kevin and I will meet with you to discuss questions about the budget. We'll always be available for emails. We'll always be available for emails, or someone has a quick question you want to call about too. But the budget workshop is coming up on Saturday, March 13th. It will be virtual, like a council or committee meeting. We just can't accommodate everybody in the room, and we can't be sitting shoulder to shoulder like we have in the past years. So we will do it virtually. We'll have some of the staff in the room, in the council chamber, but you all will be at home, and we can interact that way. If you want food that day, we won't be providing it because of COVID. Bring your own breakfast. But we will try to get through everything in three hours. And again, other questions, comments, concerns, Kevin and I will be available to meet with you, try to answer those questions before, during, after that meeting, all the way up until, honestly, all the way up until it's adopted. But there's a couple of weeks set aside in the budget schedule for those appointments, if you'd like to make them. I will mention Kevin is working to get the budget on the city website, so the public can access it. We did provide also copies to the candidates that are running for office that aren't incumbents, so they have it. But it will be up as soon as Kevin can get that posted, so people can find it under the... It should be under Finance Department. And if you go to the city website, city government departments, and under Finance, it should say the proposed budget to be done, but soon. A couple other things. COVID-19, I don't want to echo everything or repeat everything that's been said, but a great news, if you've been watching the national news or any of the news, there's a third vaccine out there now. That's another positive. So that will increase some of the supply, not in the short term as much as it will over the long term. It looks like there might even be a fourth one that's coming in the next month. I'm keeping track of all the information through the DuPage County Health Department, and sometimes through the Illinois State Health, Public Health Department. But infection rates, hospital rates are still decreasing or have leveled off at a much lower level, which is very good sign for our region that we're in, with King County, DuPage County are one region. I will repeat what the mayor said, though. Please keep practicing the three W's. We can't be in big groups, we can't be together. I am frustrated as anybody with this. I have no patience in life from the day I was born. But we have to keep working through this, and we will, because it's safer for everyone if we keep following those things. And vaccines, I can't reemphasize enough, the mayor was saying, and some others, just keep looking for them. If you're eligible, and you can go on the state public health department website, find out who's currently eligible, they have a whole system. It's persistence and perseverance. You can sign up, please sign up for the DuPage County Health Department registration site, but retail pharmacies all over the place. You go on the website the mayor had cited. I went on there Friday just to see what it looked like, because I saw it in an email that I'd received. So I hit the link, and there are places all around us in DuPage County, within a few miles, because the pharmacies, all the ones that you know, the big retail chains have appointments. Now, I don't know if they're all available all the time, but go on them. I read an article in the Daily Herald last week, somebody in Warrenville was actually interviewed about their experience, said, get on those websites, keep hitting refresh, go on odd times, that there won't be as crowded, maybe late at night or early, early morning hours. Hopefully, everyone can eligible can get a shot. I will be at the back of the line someplace waiting to get my turn anxiously. So hopefully, we get a lot of supply soon. And I wish everyone the best with those. Also, I'm sorry, medical providers, as was mentioned, like such as Northwestern Medical through CDH has those. I checked, and if you already signed up on their link, if you're with Northwestern Medicine, the other groups I can't speak for, they should be notifying you when you're eligible. I think I heard our treasurer say that he got that notice. So there's a lot of opportunities out there. It just takes some effort to go and try to find them. In a few months, I think it'll be a lot easier. But at this time, hopefully, everybody who needs it can get those shots. And I will just final, finish with the health department, and some other agencies have helped to get the city's frontline workers, public safety have gotten their vaccines or are getting them, all that want them. And other frontline employees have also been able to get appointments, to get vaccines, the essential workers that we have, public works and some others. So that has been very helpful. Some of us that can work remotely and are isolating ourselves and are not yet eligible are not in that group, but other employees have been able to. So that helps for public safety, for our employees, and for the people they work with. Thank you.
Thank you, John. We'll move to city attorney Leniman, Brooke?
I have no comment, Mayor.
Thank you. On to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
Mayor, could I... Mayor, I'm sorry, and I don't mean to interrupt, but I just had one announcement, if I may, about a moment.
Sure.
We had an unforeseen plumbing issue at the police department tonight. I was advised of it during the process of this meeting. Because of that, we are going to have a contractor coming out tomorrow to try and resolve this issue. But the police department lobby will be closed tomorrow. And this is also going to be posted on... To let the public know, this will not affect any of our emergency response issues. So if you need a police officer, you call 911, and one will be dispatched for whatever need that you have. If you do come to the police department for some problem, and you pick up that red phone, and that'll connect you with our central dispatch at Ducom, and an officer will come into the station. But the lobby tomorrow will be closed. I just wanted to make folks aware of that.
Okay, thank you, Chief. All right. On to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you. Motion to approve the agenda for the March 1st, 2021 city council regular meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, please speak up if you wish to take anything off the agenda or any alteration. Hearing none, may I have a roll call then, please?
Alderman Crishell?
Hi.
Alderman Wilson?
Hi.
Alderman Anderson?
Hi.
Alderman Berry?
Hi.
Alderman Goodman?
Hi.
Alderman Davalos?
Hi.
Alderman Widener?
Hi.
Alderman Ashauer?
Hi.
Thank you. The consent agenda as presented has been approved for this evening. We have one set of minutes that also need approval. Again, Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you. Motion to approve the minutes of the February 16th, 2021 city council regular meeting.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
Very good motion and a second. Again, any discussion of those minutes before we vote? Hearing none, may I again have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer?
Hi.
Alderman Goodman?
Hi.
Alderman Widener?
Hi.
Alderman Anderson?
Hi.
Alderman Wilson?
Hi.
Alderman Berry?
Hi.
Alderman Davalos?
Hi.
Alderman Crishell?
Hi.
Thank you, Emily. Those minutes from February 16th, 2021 have been approved. The consent agenda for this evening, item 6A, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and past resolution R2021-12, extending the duration of the March 16th, 2020 declaration of emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the city council. B, accept senior civil engineer Hawking's recommendation and past resolution R2021-13, approving the reduction of the public improvement security bonds for the Everton Apartments project. C, receiving file reports of invoices paid up to February 24th, 2021, in the amount of $78,842.26. And D, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before March 15th, 2021, in the amount of $55,663.21.
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second, Alderman Wilson?
Very good, thank you. Roll call, please. Alderman Berry?
Hi.
Alderman Goodman?
Hi.
Alderman Widener?
Hi.
Alderman Crishell?
Hi.
Alderman Anderson?
Hi.
Alderman Davalos?
Hi.
Alderman Ashauer?
Hi.
Alderman Wilson?
Hi.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been approved for this evening. We'll move on to the regular agenda, item 7A. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
Accept staff recommendation and approve the waste management garbage sticker buyback program is outlined in the staff memorandum dated February 18th, 2021.
Alderman Widener, seconds.
Motion and a second. Assistant City Administrator White, would you like to outline for the public what's going on here?
Yes, thank you. During our recent discussions about the new garbage program, there were questions about what residents could do with the unused waste management stickers that were not needed. After April 30th, I spoke to Finance Director Dolstrand about doing a buyback program, and in the memo is outlined some key points to that buyback program. So the city will be accepting unused waste management stickers. The program will begin May 3rd and run through May 21st. Residents can bring in their stickers anytime during normal business hours, complete a form, and provide those stickers to be purchased back from the city. The city will issue them a check within 30 days of the receipt of the stickers and the form. They can also drop off the form with their unused stickers in the mail drop box that is in the finance department, where you drop off your utility bill payments. Stickers purchased through local retailers, residents are encouraged to reach out to those local retailers and ask if they will be providing a buyback program. Waste Management will buy back stickers from city hall and any retailers that sell stickers, but it is up to each individual retailer how they're going to handle a buyback program or if they're going to offer a sticker buyback program. So the city will buy back stickers that were sold from city hall between May 1st of 2020 through April 30th of 2021. The reason behind that is the sticker prices changed as of May 1, so to facilitate an easier process of returning and buying back the stickers at the same rate, it made sense to limit the buyback to stickers that were sold between May 1 of 20 and April 30th of 2021. I believe that covers all of the information in the memo. There is a form that was provided via email. I can share it as well here for anyone that missed that or didn't see the form today, just as an informational item. The form is very simplistic, just asking for customer name and phone number, the mailing address where they would like the rebate or the buyback check sent to, and the number of stickers that they are requesting to be sold back to the city. And some finance information. So I'll take any questions.
Right, thank you, Christina. And we'll go to the ultimate for questions or comments on this item, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
No questions, just thank you for the responsiveness in putting this program together.
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer?
No questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
Yes, I'm glad that we're able to do this for the citizens of Warrenville who have already purchased their stickers, and I appreciate everything that staff has done. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
No questions, and I too am very glad that you guys took the time to do this. Thank you.
Great. Alderman Goodman? You're muted, Alderman. There we go.
There we go.
All right. What if people can't recall where they bought the stickers? Are there numbers or something they can check?
Yes, finance staff has a list of the stickers that were sold, so they will be checking serial numbers. So if they're not sure, they can contact finance.
Okay, great. Will there be weekend hours and the normal business hours that they can come by?
There are not weekend hours currently. City Hall's Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., but they can use the drop box outside of finance to drop off the form and their stickers in a sealed envelope. And then again, finance will issue a check.
Sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Crishell?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. No questions.
Very good. And Alderman Wilson?
No questions.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I hop in here for a moment? This is Finance Director Dolstrand. I just want to clarify something that Christina said, and I want to make sure there's not a misunderstanding. We do not have the ability to verify sticker numbers for those that were not bought here at city hall. We can verify what they bought here, but I would not be able to verify what they bought at, say, Walgreens or Tom's Market. So it's only, we're only able to verify the numbers of the stickers they purchased here.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hey, this is Larry. I got a question about just something related. The recycling, is it going to be a separate container for recycling that they're going to offer, and are they going to pick up the old recycling containers that we've had been using for years?
Christina?
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay, so there is a separate container for recycling. So you'll get one cart or toter for garbage and a separate cart or toter for recycling. Waste Management will be coming through and picking up their carts in the last couple weeks of, or the last week of April with the last collection. They are not going to pick up recycling bins that they provided, those the residents can keep. Any resident-owned containers or carts will not be picked up or taken, those will be yours to keep and repurpose or reuse.
Thank you so much. I don't, I don't, it didn't seem like that was clear to me, at least when we were doing the presentation last week.
Okay. And there is information that just went out in the newsletter, as well as on the city website. There is an entire page dedicated to the new waste program. More information will be published in the coming weeks on the website, the Facebook page, and in the April and likely May edition of the newsletter.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions before we go to the vote? Hearing none, roll call, please. Alderman Davalos?
Hi.
Alderman Ashauer?
Hi.
Alderman Crishell?
Hi.
Alderman Widener?
Hi.
Alderman Wilson?
Hi.
Alderman Berry?
Hi.
Alderman Goodman?
Hi.
Alderman Anderson?
Hi.
Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go on to unfinished business. We have one item there, if someone would like to make the motion and have a second so we could have discussion.
I would like motion to accept Public Works and Infrastructure's committee recommendation and pass ordinance O2021-06, approving the purchase of a sweet sweeper from Standard Equipment Company and Financing Tax Exempt Leasing Corporation, and authorizing the disposition of surplus personal property.
Second, Alderman Davalos?
A motion and a second. There is a memo in your packet dated February 10th on this. City Administrator Coakley, would you like to give us an outline at the beginning here before discussion?
I would just actually summarize, and then we can answer questions or comment, I'm sorry, not summarize comment. There were a lot of questions about the capital maintenance replacement fund and the money that was available and how it was all working. Now, some of the aldermen are working with staff on some of those things. They have a little bit more information, but the rest of the aldermen now do have. I know you didn't get a chance to read the budget book cover to cover yet, you've only had it a couple hours, but that information is in there, and if somebody wants to refer to it, I think that's easier to look at. We can certainly address questions on finances if you have them. I'll defer to Phil to answer the questions about how the lease works and all. Maybe better just to go with questions there. But suffice to say, it wasn't cost effective, given some of the revenue situations due to COVID, to purchase the equipment outright. And for the public, staff, our public works department came up with some creative ways to be able to finance that at a fairly low cost over a number of years. We can advance pay it off, save some of that financing costs. But it's a lot easier from a cash flow standpoint to purchase it in a sort of lease purchase, sort of in terms of like you might, with a vehicle, you might purchase for yourself way, instead of paying it outright in cash. But my main purpose was to just direct everyone, if they have their budget book handy, you can refer to the pages there and see that indeed, as the finance director did a test in the backup material, we do have the money in the next fiscal year and projected beyond that to afford this type of purchase.
Thank you, John. And the memo does give a number of reasons why this is a worthy purchase. So with those introductions, we'll go to Alderman for comments and our questions for staff. Alderman Anderson?
Yeah, just trying to understand the financing mechanism we're doing here. If it turns out that in the middle of this year, we have the ability to pay the whole $207,000, are we... that in the middle of this year, we have the ability to pay the whole $207,000, are we committed to paying the three, basically the 3% over five years, that $43,000 or so? Is this committing us to pay that even if we pay it off this year? Or will it be a savings if we're able to pay it off this year?
Kevin, would you like to take that?
Absolutely. It will be a savings if we're able to pay it off early. We can pay it off early at any point along the way. I've also recommended that we take the advanced payment option in there. If we do go out over five years, it would actually save us almost $5,900 if we take the advanced payment option, as opposed to the arrears pay, pay, payment option. So, that would be another way we can save a little bit of money as well.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer?
The, actually, no questions. That answered what I had on my mind. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
Yes, I'm glad that we're able to come up with a solution to be able to go forward with this, and I'm glad that we're getting, you know, trade-in for the vehicle that we do have. So, thank you for, everyone for working on this.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I got most of my questions answered. I just want to make sure, Kevin, that, so if we wanted to pay this off in year two, or year three, we can just pay the balance off without any penalty?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. My only question is that it's dated February 3, and says it's valid for 14 days. So, is this quote, did we tell them we weren't going to have a meeting before then? And is it still valid?
I need to have Phil answer that. He worked with them on specific lease.
Bill Kukler? Bill?
Yes, yes, it is still valid. Actually, I'm trying to get the contract together with them. We've already made an application for financing, so they could provide the agreement. But that, the agreement, they haven't finalized that process yet. So, but we're in the process of working with them already. So, they're aware we're going to, the meeting was tonight, and that, that quote is still, still good.
Okay, good. I think this is a very reasonable interest rate, and a prepayment without penalty sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell?
Thanks. This is probably for Director Kukler. Does, does this lease come with, does it get us out of, from under the potential risk of maintenance? Obviously, it's a new piece of equipment, so we should assume that there's not going to, you know, have anything go wrong with it in the first couple of years. But the whole reason we're looking at this is because of a repair that we had to do, right? So, I guess my question is, you know, regular maintenance, those types of things, is that part of this lease agreement?
Any repairs will be required due to, there'll be, there could be, in the first couple of years, due to warranty work that should be warranted, would be covered by the standard equipment. But if, you know, there's regular maintenance, replacement of different, you know, fluids, tires, things like that would be on us, but nothing, nothing major. Like, we're talking $6,500 just to get the current street sweeper on the street this year. Nothing that major. Anything that went wrong with it that shouldn't go wrong, that was warranted, would be taken care of by the vendor.
Okay, yep, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
I have no questions. Thank you for the, developing the alternative to the straight purchase that we originally were looking at.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wilson?
No questions.
Very good. We gone through everyone, and it's time for a roll call.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. And thank you to staff again, as some have expressed, for being nimble and always coming back with alternatives for us to do things that we need to do when there are questions initially, for answering our questions and providing the information for informed decisions. So, thank you so much, staff. We have nothing under new business. We have no necessity for a closed session. The last thing we need, then, would be a motion to adjourn. Who would like?
I move to adjourn.
Alderman Wilson, followed by a second.
Alderman Anderson. Seconds.
Alderman Anderson, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. One more roll call, please. Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer? Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We are adjourned. Thank you for your attention and attendance this evening, and we will see you again next Monday night.